So this is a work session of the City of Trinidad, Monday, November 10th, 2025, at 3:00 PM in the City Council Chamber, City Hall, 135 North Adams Street, Trinidad, Colorado, 8:10:82. First off, thank you, everybody, for being in attendance. We have a pretty full audience and a fairly full agenda for our work session, so we'll get right into it.
Mayor Protem, before you head into the agenda, I wanted to introduce our municipal court clerk and Assistant City Clerk Felicia Taves, who's sitting at her first time at a council meeting today. So everyone, please welcome her.
Thank you, Tara. Well, we appreciate it. All right, and now, Item 1, Boards and Commission Interviews. Item A, Library Advisory Board, Renee Monahan.
Mayor Protem, that needed to be rescheduled. She had a conflict, so you'll see her in two weeks.
Okay, all right. Planning and Zoning Variance Commission, Arna Miller.
Hi.
If you want to approach the podium. Hello.
Hi.
Thank you for being here. So if you wouldn't mind just giving us a little background as to why you would like to be on the Planning and Zoning Variance Commission and any pertinent facts you think that would support you being there?
Great, yes. Hi, my name is Arna. I grew up in Denver and I got my bachelor's degree in architecture at CU Boulder, and I worked in a firm for a year. And then after the recession, I lost my job, and then I went to be an artist full-time. And then the last few years, I've been just diving back into architecture because I never really lost that interest. And specifically for high-performance buildings and building science. And I'm also very interested, like, how do you call it, like, an armchair city planner? Or just, I find it just really interesting, the whole systems and all the systems that work together, for like the way buildings work with people and the environment and energy and transportation, and just all the systems involved. And I went to my first planning and zoning board last month, just to sit in, to see what it was about. And I loved it. I thought it was so interesting. And I also, I'm on the path to becoming a registered or a licensed architect. So I'm, you know, logging hours and experience, so I really just want to know as much as I can about how things work in the context of a city and the people that are using the buildings. And, yeah, and I'm, my life goal is to stay self-employed, so I never want to work for someone else. I want to work with people but not under a boss. So like, so with that as my goal, I, yeah, like I said, I want to just know as much as I can, be in the loop, be able to help where I can. I think I have a lot of kind of specific and valuable knowledge about energy conservation and health for occupants, especially in systems that work together. So I think I contribute, I can contribute a lot, and I think I can, it will also benefit me so much. Yeah, and I really liked everyone on the board. I really liked the variety of people and perspectives that were brought.
Arna, thank you. I would say, and I think I would probably garner quite a bit of agreement. That was quite possibly the most complete introduction that we've had for an applicant to a commission. A board, I should say. I mean, you've covered, you've attended meetings, your education, interests, and they all seem super relevant to what we're doing here. I would ask, do you anticipate having the time to devote to that? Do you think there'd be any conflict there?
Oh, absolutely not. This is what I'm doing with my free time anyways, is researching things. So it's like I might as well put it in a bigger context if I'm doing it anyways.
All right, thank you. Is there any other questions from council?
In what you've been doing in architecture, have you been applying ordinances or any kind of experience like that?
That's what I'm working on as we speak. I actually got a small job from the Purgatory Valley Construction, and it's a garage add-on to a modular home. And funny enough, it was Sunny Leone from the board who gave my contact to Glenn. So like, and he said, oh, it's perfect timing. I needed somebody. And I'm like, oh, it'd be like great for me too. So I am actually looking up all these things. I talked to Jeremy and Tara downstairs first. I, yeah, I've been looking at the building codes for, yeah, the electrical placement, the firewall separation. And this is actually, the project I'm working on right now is a generic. It's not a state-specific right now. So I know that it varies depending on where these modular homes are going to be placed, but that is just, you know, a little bit more.
We've met before, but I didn't know that was your background.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we're all thrilled to have someone who wants to pursue that in this community because it's very needed.
I've heard that, yes.
Any other questions?
No, I think, thank you for putting in a board. It seems like you seem to be really interested in it. We need people like that.
Thanks, yeah.
We definitely appreciate your time, Arna, and I'm sure you've been informed, but the vote to see if you are installed into that board will happen at the next regular council meeting.
On the 18th.
All right.
Oh, good to know. Okay, so I know the next planning and zoning meeting is tomorrow, so I can just show up as a citizen.
Absolutely. All right, well, thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it as much. Item 2, Review with Health Solutions Co-Responder Program in the Trinidad Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We have our partners from Health Solutions here today, Kendra Ochoa and Tia Miller. They're going to come forward and talk a little bit about this program. I just want to give you a heads up that we're going to be putting an MOU in front of City Council on December 2nd to continue this program in an official partnership. We've been using the program through grant funding. We've also budgeted for this program in the 2026 budget. So we want to give you a preview of how it's working. Thank you.
Hi, as Tara introduced, I'm Kendra. Thank you so much for having us here today. And my partner, Tia, who also works closely with our program. I just wanted to take an opportunity for council and for the city to really capture the incredible success we've had since inception about a year ago, almost exactly a year to date. So especially co-response in a rural program, these numbers that I want to share with you today are shocking and really exciting. So to back up just a little bit, co-response is that we have paired a mental health professional with the Trinidad Police Department. Our program, the model that we've followed for co-response, embeds that person at the police department. So she's currently responding to all calls for service that her and her officer are dispatched to, and the goal being that the majority of those are some kind of underlying behavioral health need that's been identified. What's also nice is she has the opportunity to overlap training with our officers in that she can provide this on-the-job training, right, of hey, this might have come out as a domestic dispute, and here we are, this is what I can offer. And that also then provides that additional kind of support and resource for the officers. So in the year that we've had, we've had 128 successful calls. Success meaning that contact was made and she was able to divert that individual from a law enforcement response such as jail and the emergency room. So being able to do that, we've had 128 successful calls, which is one of the greatest goals of the program, is being able to divert those who are experiencing a behavioral health crisis from the judicial system and from using emergency services. Also, I would say this is my most favorite data point to capture, is that of the behavioral health calls that Trinidad Police Department has responded to, 100% of them have been referred to her program. So that either is her primary response, where she's with the officer going to that call, or it's been referred to her for outreach afterwards. So if the officer identified, hey, we have this need, and maybe the co-responder was not available at that time, she's still providing outreach and connecting that individual to resources. So that is my most favorite data point to capture since it's such a new program and it's been so successful. What we're also asking for here today, or not asking for, but I wanted to present, is this incredible partnership has been on both sides. So Health Solutions has been very eager to provide this to rural community. We've been involved in co-response for about 10 years now, as far as providing that as one of the services that we're offering. The opportunity that came up to bring that to Trinidad, Colorado about a year ago, was something we definitely wanted to be a part of, and we've decided with this success, it's definitely something we want to continue. I would love to answer any questions, but I'm sure I've just guided everybody too.
One of the things that came up immediately when we were considering the safety of the co-responder, have there been any incidences where that person has been in danger at all?
I would love to say zero, and immediately I want to say zero. And I think walking into Safeway, there's danger, right, as a civilian. So I don't know if I captured it as zero. But as far as on-the-job, no, that we also offer specialized training. So that's alongside with the police department, Detective Lay, New Chief. They're great about saying like, hey, we have these trainings going on. We think it'd be great for your co-responder to jump in, and we make that happen. So she's also offered, you know, individualized, specific training to on-the-job safety, really being aware of surroundings, things like that. And there's specialized skills and trainings that we also send her to as a co-responder. So I would love to say there's been zero, and there's always danger. But as far as an incident that has been documented or anything, there's been zero.
That's excellent. I'm thrilled to hear how well it's going. We have a lot of hopes for it, and it's so necessary.
Yeah, the only question is, seems like she's doing a lot of work, and she keep working. I mean, it seems like she's doing a lot of calls, and does have any issue with getting to people and stuff to get this done?
No, I mean, fingers crossed, to talk about burnout. She's doing great. We would love to keep her forever. I make that real clear every time we interact, that this is the plan. And I think in our future is expansion, right, to understand this is the capacity we can do with one individual. What does an entire team look like, right? What if I could cover every day 24/7 with co-respons? I mean, truly, if you're asking for a Christmas list, that's where I'm going with a total, total coverage.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So it's LPI, so like, yes. So I've had the, I've had the pleasure of like actually being around her and seeing her in action, and she is a great addition, that's something that we needed. I know when we talked about this program when we first started, we, possible need for expansion later. So seeing that it is a success, that the continuing and carrying on of it, I think, is crucial to our community with the mental health crisis and some of the other stuff that's been coming down the pipe. We're going to need these officers way more than what we think in the coming year. So thank you so much for bringing this to us.
Absolutely. Thanks for sharing that. I love you to have some interaction. I finally did add Kendra as the expert on this program, but something that I wanted to add and why I came down here is we believe in the program too, and that's why we're continually looking for additional grant funds. Kendra and I are constantly looking at ways to continue to fund what we have, but also look at expansion.
Thank you.
Yes, we are always looking.
What are, currently, how many working days is the co-responder with the police department? Say, I guess maybe on an annual basis, month? Do you have that information?
I don't, on an annual, so she works four 10-hour shifts. And that was a shift at inception. We started out at 5 eights, just because we were looking for a little bit additional coverage. And what we quickly found out, which we then shaped her schedule, was that she needed a little bit more time in the evenings. So we can really appreciate like that overlap. And we worked that with the Trinidad Police Department as far as identifying the days with the highest call volumes and when her services can be most used.
In effect, I mean, it is genuinely a full-time job.
Absolutely.
That's good. So with the 128 successful outcome, is there any way to, I don't think you'd have this information. I think you'd have to be partnered with the PD. Is there any way to monetize what we avoided with those interactions? Is that a reasonable question? Is that something that we could run down?
Absolutely. It's also data that we're hoping to have time to track. So right now, her average time on a call is 43 minutes. What we'd love to do with some of the other data pieces that we have been gathering is then be able to work with Trinidad Police Department to say, hey, by this time, if the average officer is spending this much time on a behavioral health call independently, when we add co-response, how is that helping us, right? So I know for some of those statistics, as we compare them, I can then capture for you, hey, we can, we can save an entire FTE of an officer because she's offering this skilled intervention because the calls are this less of time, if that makes sense.
No, that, yeah, that does make sense. So do you, do you know or have available, potentially for future, what percentage of rural communities roughly comparable to Trinidad have a co-responder program?
I don't, but one cool, exciting thing that's coming out is the state of Colorado has been tracking this data since inception about 11 years ago, and that's with all. They're making a dashboard that's supposed to be available in the next quarter that gives you access to everybody's data across the state. So part of grants that are available through that is that we have to submit this data in order to remain compliant. Trinidad was a part of that last year. So a really neat part is that we're going to have access to that data. My hope is in the next quarter, and that's something I can present to council at that time.
So I just want to verify, I mean, all indication is that at this point in time, this is going to be a viable program into 2026?
We are. We're looking at an MOU that we'll bring forward December 4th. We've got a draft. It will be a partnership between Health Solutions, who continues to employ our current co-responder, and the City of Trinidad. We've also added a line item in the outside agency line item to support our program as it exists today. And I believe Kendra and Tia can explain some grants that we're applying for, where we hope to expand the program.
Go ahead, just one.
Go ahead.
You're fine.
Did that answer your question?
It did, okay.
It just occurs to me, too, you're saving the police department money and not having to go and testify in court for a case that went through the judicial system, and the jail cost and ER cost. It's huge, everything that comes out from that. So I hope that's considered in the calculations as well.
Absolutely.
Just for information, you said she works four 10s? Is this during the week, and is there a way, the call, if there's an emergency or she calls on weekends or something? Does she answer calls like that, or is it just strictly during her hours she works?
So on paper, it is strictly the hours that she works. And I would love to say if anybody's met LPI, I think she's securely available 24/7, weekends and holidays, all the things. That's not the expectation forever, and it's truly not the expectation now. It just speaks to the human and the interactions that she's trying to bring to the community and the relationships that she's building. So again, our goal would be to expand to that 24/7 coverage. I also want to say something incredible that this program has brought to Trinidad is also this breaking down of silos, right? We've had crisis services here for years. We've had behavioral health services here for years. And LPI has brought this incredible opportunity to marry all of these teams even more than they ever were before. So I think knowing that we have access to crisis in the times that she's not available and that she sometimes provides that warm handoff, or has made those relationships even stronger in her absence, also speaks to what this has provided.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I've been, only had the opportunity with a short interaction with LPI, but I mean, she's definitely seems to be a really quality human being and has the best interest of people first and foremost, and so that's always a good place to start from. With all indication, I mean, she'll continue to be a co-responder?
Absolutely. That's, I mean, that's as I understand it today, and hopefully, as long as she'll keep us. So that's our goal, let's take it from her.
That was a huge motivation in budgeting.
Okay, I think, I think as it's been mentioned a couple times up here, if it's possible to somehow obtain those numbers of actual savings, I think, you know, with some subject matter experts, meaning the police department, you guys, city staff, I think that we could find quite a few tangential things that would really add up to cost savings. So it would be, it would be interesting and potentially useful to know, but unless there's, you have any further questions? No further questions?
Just to thank you for all your services you put in. Thank you for being here today. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Not only do we want to thank our partners at Health Solutions, but we want to point out Detective Sergeant Jen Lay, who headed up this programming grant for us, and Ms. Sierra Kirkpatrick, who's managed that grant on behalf of our finance department for the last year.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. You're wonderful. We appreciate that. All right. Item 3, Review of the 2026 Lottery and Economic Development Funds. Who presented that?
So here we go with another budget memo. This will be our third and final budget memo for 2026. Let's go into the lottery fund review. Lottery revenues are apportioned from the state of Colorado lottery funds through two primary channels. The Conservation Trust Fund, that's CTF funds, and Greater Outdoors Colorado, which we call GOCO. CTF receives approximately 40% of the state's lottery funding, which is distributed to over 450 eligible local governments to support parks, recreation, and open space projects. Each year we receive funding, we are expecting $95,000 in revenue for 2026 annual allotment, and a very small interest income on the remaining funds from previous years. Total lottery fund revenues of $95,150 are budgeted. Expenditures, we have budgeted $45,000 for parks maintenance and a small amount for trails maintenance. We are also budgeting for swim pool maintenance, which includes a new sand filter and the associated dry acid, which are necessary equipment upgrades for the pools, making the total lottery fund expenses of $101,150. So revenues of $95,150 over expenses of $101,150 is a difference of $500,000. We have approximately $32,000 in reserve, so we'll be going into that reserve, $5,000 for this next year. Mr. Marty Velazquez is here to answer any questions regarding this budget, if you have questions.
Is that reserved for the whole city, or is that just for the lottery fund?
That's just the lottery funds budgeted for the City of Trinidad. We received $102,000 this year. We're scheduled to receive approximately $95,000 next year. This is pretty important funding that we receive from Conservation Trust Fund.
Most of that's going to the swimming pool?
Swimming pool and parks maintenance. $45,000 to parks maintenance, the rest to the pool.
Tara, do you have any indication or knowledge of what the future funding of this will look like?
Going over the past three to four years, it looks fairly stable. We've received no indication that lottery funds are ceasing or desist. Any questions for Mr. Velazquez before we move on?
Do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
No, none on this lottery deal? It's for something else.
Okay. Marty, one second. Marty, one second. Do you, you go ahead?
No, I don't have anything on this one. This is pretty clear.
So I know we've mentioned the pool briefly, and that some of this money is going to support that. How, speaking to the operation of the pool, how does that happen heading towards the spring? Looking at the pool's operation, you know, obviously we have a date that we like to open as we approach it. How is that readiness checked, Marty?
Are you asking, how does it affect this opening, or?
Well, what, I mean, yeah, I guess this funds, we should, hopefully, we'll be in a position where we need to open the gate, is what I mean.
Yeah, the lottery helps us with cool chemicals, for one. It also helps with any breakages that we may have. It helps kind of sustain that. It did pitch in for the new boiler. It helps with chemicals and maintenance for the pool. It also helps in the baseball parks at South Side with, we use it to spray for weeds and fertilizer. As far as the pool goes, it's a, it's a big part of getting it ready.
So that's, I guess what I'm asking, is say if you have a, what's the usual opening date?
Memorial Day is what we shoot for every year.
And then how soon before that are we able to check the operation of the pool?
As soon as we know that it's not going to freeze anymore to get all the water flowing. Because those pumps, if you freeze one, as happened in Walsenburg, you're ruined. So we kind of have to wait for warm weather before we can get started. We'd love to get started earlier. It just depends on weather.
Yeah, okay. All right, is there any further questions?
I just think it's useful to know that we get a fixed amount. I've never understood that before. I thought it was, it went up and down based on what our local sales were, and I really haven't been able to do it that.
It's pretty close to the same amount every year, looking over the past three years.
I wonder if the Colorado Lottery thinks about upping the prize? Because the prize in comparison to the other lotteries that are available to people are really low. And I think it would get more traction if they increased the price.
Good.
Thank you.
I think we are, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the Economic Development Fund. The Economic Development Fund was established by ordinance by City Council and created for the purpose of supporting growth and development. It's funded by transfers from the general fund. A large transfer of $2 million was made from proceeds of marijuana, 5% tax purposes, for the purpose of the Housing Now program in 2024. I believe this was the council that approved that program. The 2026 budget includes one additional transfer into the fund of approximately $20,000. And then additionally, there's $30,000 in interest income. So everything that we have in this Economic Development Fund draws interest. We're expecting the Economic Development Fund revenues of $50,000 this coming year. Expenditures, in recent years, this fund was primarily used for Housing Now incentive program, established by City Council to promote housing development. In 2025, we anticipate spending approximately, that's this year, $125,000, with the remaining balance of awarded funds for future years in the amount of $805,585. The draft budget delivered to council on October 7th will be adjusted down from $875,000 to this number, $805,585. So revenues of $50,000 versus expenditures of $805,585 are a difference of negative $755,585. But I just want to remind you that that's all available fund balance that you've already allocated. So it has been allocated. It's set aside for the purposes of this program. I also want to remind you, and Michael Yurman, who presented the other night, spoke to this. You do not receive your cash incentive from this program until your certificate of occupancy has been issued. So that's why we're seeing some awards made in '24 that may not actually receive their funding until '26, '27, or '28.
Have we had any of the housing projects dropped out?
I would love to bring forward. I believe Mr. Mason is in the audience and can speak to that. Thank you.
Yeah, we have a couple, two, or I think we've got three, kind of since I've been on. They, that includes the depot over there on Al, and then above Almacs on Commercial Street there. Those are the two major ones. We also had, recently, we had the one on Pi, not Eagles building, it's the old Malters building. That one's going to get in as well. So there was a couple dropped out, yes.
How many, how much savings did we have to save from that?
Um.
I mean, I don't have them.
Yeah, I don't have the ones that are still active. I would say it was roughly $15,000 per unit. I think we were talking about 18 units.
I thought it was like $25,000.
Oh, yeah, $25,000 for the re, yeah, those are, it's $15,000 for the other units that are brand-new builds.
Is that money goes back into?
Economic Development Fund.
For, other than housing? Because we need to do something else besides housing.
It does. It will not, it won't be allocated. It would not be allocated. Housing is council deciding.
Yeah. So roughly $400,000, just quick math right there.
To be fair.
Either way, this money has been leveraged to create quite a few units. We still have a lot of good projects in the works. Some of them are Some of them are nearing CO, some of them are just lacking the final details and then some of them are a little ways out still, like the project we talked about last Tuesday, or last Wednesday, as well as the project down the street here. Those are the bigger two, but really good projects and just a good use of this fund being leveraged to help meet those gaps for those projects.
Further questions?
I do. Do we hear individuals headlines for the use of the money?
Yeah, we kind of, we were going off the funding agreements. They were two years to get your plans ready and get a building permit. The, that's been the case if these ones have lapsed. The ones that are active, they're either still working on, they have the building permit but they haven't really started their construction yet. And with the funding of, like Church Street, their agreement was renewed earlier this year. So they just have a little bit of time, which makes sense for that project. It's a big stack of different funds, so. Yeah, but a lot of them, they're all in the process one way or another. Trinidad State, we've been working with them. They have, which is a really great program. But they had three left, three houses left. They're working on one. The other two have a zoning issue because the lots are too small. So that's something that we'll be talking about later on once they get their plans formulated. But so with those, we're giving them a little bit of grace because they had a zoning issue. So they came to us and said, we have a zoning issue. You know, we can't get building permits, so. Yeah, very understandable.
As Councilmember Sheu stated, there'll be money coming back into this fund that was allocated for projects that won't be used. We are leaving that fund balance for now. We're not budgeting that fund balance for a program. This will be a policy decision for the new council to discuss how they would like to do that investment. As we get into next year and we have a better idea of what that balance looks like, we'll be bringing forward some ideas for the new council to discuss in how we develop an economic development program. As Councilmember Sheu stated, that's a little more diversified. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. That finishes this line, this item in the agenda. So you can move to the next one, please.
All right, item four. Review of lodging tax ordinance.
This lodging tax ordinance that's being put forward is what we spoke about at the council meeting the other night. We captured the feedback from city council at a work session in July. The reason we're putting forward this repeal and replace today is because we want to budget to this new ordinance. The budget that we're presenting is not consistent with the existing ordinance, which has those percentages for thirty-five percent of the funding to be spent on administrative costs, twenty-five for marketing, fifteen for parks and rec, ten for arts and culture, and then five for miscellaneous. So we are putting forward a repeal of that and a replacement. Several things I will say about this new ordinance is first, it moves to a pay-as-you-go system. So we are anticipating budgeting, we are anticipating revenues of over six hundred thousand. We're only budgeting over four hundred thousand. We want to start building that reserve fund so that in two years, we're able to work off of the funds that we've collected. Second, we're saying broadly that this marketing can be used for advertising, attracting conferences, conventions, meetings, and activities that bring people to the community for overnight stays. It can also be used for improvement, development, quality of life, community facilities, programs, events, and capital expenditure support for arts and culture events, programs, and facilities. Finally, we're asking that the new ordinance allow no more than twenty-five percent of the money to be spent on operational costs. So I think what we've seen in recent years is that the tourism fund had operational costs that far exceeded the marketing money that we were putting in. And that is why, I believe, it may be one of the reasons we're seeing lodging tax decrease every year. So this would put a limit of twenty-five percent. We may in future years actually bring forward a budget that limits it further. But we moved every operational expense from tourism into the general fund. And to balance the general fund this year, we will need to capture twenty-five percent of the four hundred thousand. So one hundred thousand, as I go over the budget in a minute, to offset operations in the general fund that are tourism related. We do believe we can take these next years to bring that down to much lower. But for now, twenty-five percent is what we're recommending. And then you'll see that the, that number five says the city manager will be responsible for preparing an annual budget for lodging tax fund and providing a quarterly financial report of the same. This is what we brought forward to you, which is we need a decision from council. So we can move forward next Tuesday night on whether you want to seat and continue to seat a lodging tax advisory board, which does give council some distance. A seated board of folks with specialized skills in that area does give council some measure of distance from decisions. Or whether you want staff to implement. And we were fairly split when we did the work session in July between three members that did not want the lodging tax advisory board anymore. They wanted staff to do that function. And two members who wanted the lodging tax advisory board. And two members who were fairly silent on the issue. So to bring forward the ordinance, we need direction. We need direction on that piece.
What questions does council have?
I think what I would say is largely what I said when we were talking about this as a concept, that I think we're missing out by not having an actual professional marketing company managing the messaging for the city. I appreciate that people have a lot of thoughts about that, about what our messaging should be and people of various interests in town, outdoor recreation, arts and culture, music, all the different things that are part of history. All of that needs to be gathered by, I believe, by some sort of a professional marketing agency to come up with a packaged idea that city council could get behind. It's just been very hodgepodgey. I like the videos that I've seen that we currently are putting out. They're real good, they're very professional, but it's not a focused kind of message to the people that we believe will come here, that we have data that shows are interested to come here. And so I really think strongly that that should be how staff, if staff is going to be responsible for overseeing this, recommended that it be allocated rather than having someone who has no background in that field but has a lot of love and care for Trinidad. Those things are, those are great, but it really does need to be a professional presentation. That being said, I think we will somewhat alienate the community if we don't get them some way to have an input in that. So I, it's a very tough call. But I'm definitely leaning more towards, I want professional minds attached to this. Maybe that professional organization could convene a group of local people to work with. But I don't think it makes a whole lot of sense. It hasn't historically made a whole lot of sense for people who are not actually getting paid to do that work to advise city council. That just doesn't, doesn't make sense. It's a lot of work. It's a very hard job. It's why people get training and experience in doing it. So anyways, those are my thoughts.
Are we talking about doing away with the board or just doing this?
Either way. Either we have a board that advises city council and city staff on these measures or we have city staff in making decisions and advising council.
But that's one of the things we need direction.
We do. Thank you, Les.
I'm not for having a board. You know, in the past, we've had issues with it. There's been money and, you know, I think that we can make better arrangements by not having a board. And if it comes to getting a professional or somebody to advise us or even our own staff, depending on our money. And I don't see any point taking out, what was it, ninety thousand or something that we took out for this advertisement for our firm? I'm not saying, did we take it out or did we get a bid on that?
We bid the marketing contract several years ago. We've had the same company for several years.
And that's a lot of.
We'll be reducing that budget when we go over budget in a minute.
Yeah, because they need you to be done and that's a lot of money.
Do you, are you concerned, those two opinions, about not doing a board, about the calls for transparency that the community has?
Well, you know.
Just asking, that's what I'm seeing.
I just kind of disagree. You know, at this time and age with four new members coming, they also need some input too, because they're going to have to live with the budget. And on that, so I don't know if we should. Do we need to act on this specifically or do we can?
The budget that I'm putting. Yeah, the budget that I'm putting forward is not in compliance with the existing ordinance. So at the very least, we do need a measure to move away from those percentages that the current ordinance calls for. This can be amended again in January or February, but we do, to adopt the budget, need to move away from the current ordinance, which I think we've all agreed needs to change.
Okay.
Yeah, we can make a modify based on the feedback.
Okay, so just kind of going through the, I was going through the ordinance. One thing I wish that we could add is I'd like to add the verbiage, community enrichment, you know, if that could be a consideration, because that does encompass a lot more, gives us a lot more flexibility. The other thing, the pay-as-you-go, we need to definitely go with. Everything else seems pretty, pretty clear. Looking at the board, we're actually not having any transparency as it is right now. You know, we're not getting reports, we're not getting feedback, we're not seeing anything. Being that the budget where it's at, it's, we're having to be extremely conservative. I'm not seeing the need for that much oversight from a board as of right now. I do agree that with Councilwoman O'Leary about having somebody on staff, which I think that that will come later as we start building that fund back up, because I think that's what we need to do. And I do like in the ordinance that we do have that encompassed as staff, because that person would be a member of staff. So adding that would be at your discretion or however you would decide where we would need to go with that, because this is putting a lot of responsibility on the city manager. So sitting back looking, like, do you feel? I know you feel confident, Natalie. If not, you wouldn't have put it forward. But we just want to make sure that we're not over encompassing it with too much responsibility.
What I'm hearing you say is that in these transition years of next year and perhaps the year after, that there's not much of a role for a board.
Correct.
But that the ordinance could be amended when we're talking more about the marketing budget that is more significant for the board to have a role.
Yeah, when we're looking.
Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, ma'am. What I'm feeling is like when we're sitting with a hundred million, you know, a hundred million dollars in reserve, like we used to have, you know, the budget was that high. I could see that needing some extra oversight and some clarity. But right now it needs to be scrutinized and dialed out conservatively in order for us to sustain it. If not, we're not going to have a budget.
And so for transparency, then we would need to beef up staff reports to council on this fund if you do want to move in this direction so that we could release the expenditures on a quarterly basis so that we can show that no more than twenty-five percent is going to operations. We can show that a percentage is going to marketing and we do have an amount for grant funds for local organizations as well. So I might need to seat a members, some members from the community to review the grant applications so that it's not me inciting those grant applications. I'd feel comfortable inviting members of the community to sit on a grant panel, those that, organizations were not asking for money.
There you go. Like that.
I think we do need to involve the community in some ways.
Yeah.
To be able to, if the council was open, that's how, I would prefer to handle that piece.
I think it's better that we have somebody that's in control of what's going on because, like I say, that board wasn't really functioning well for anything. There's probably a lot of waste of money that could have been saved and redone. So I think you have the right idea there, that somebody's in charge. It would be a good idea because a lot of times we didn't get reports and I think it would be good that we get a quarterly report on where the money is going.
Did you have something to ask?
I think what a central problem with the transparency has been is that I, for one, even sitting up here, don't understand what our marketing message is. I never have. And so I think if people saw that we had some kind of a smart program in place and that we provided feedback for and accountability for how we split this money at the direction of a marketing program, a marketing company, because they did the research and they showed that this is what would work the best and here's how it has worked. That would be, I think, the kind of transparency that would be important to me as a member of the community, I think to other people. What I don't like, and that has happened in the past, is that it has seemingly gone to favored messaging that doesn't come with any real understanding of what we need to do or say. And that bothers me because that seems to me, we don't know how did that work out? Did it have any good effect at all? And I would like to know that, to make sure we're not wasting money.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, I got.
All right. I have a couple of questions. So you, you mentioned, and maybe I'm misunderstanding that, but you mentioned we would save at least some of the money going forward. We'll use pay as we go, but we'll set aside some of the money as we go forward to effectively build up a reserve. And then going forward, we can pay as we go, right?
We're going to have two transition years where we collect around six hundred thousand and only spend around four. We'll have two hundred thousand in the bank. And twenty-seven, we'll collect around six hundred and spend around four. We'll now have four hundred thousand in the bank. We will begin pay as you go that third year.
So I'm, I'm sure you already know about how that works, but how, how does that work because it is tax funds? Is there any special consideration in favor? Okay.
It's similar to the way we did the five percent marijuana sales tax. We paid as we went.
So the other question I had, and again, maybe there was a misunderstanding on your part, but you mentioned declining hotel stays, in effect.
Yes.
Could potentially be linked to the way that we have allocated these funds in the past? How, and I'm not, I'm not saying I disagree with you or trying to challenge, but what, what evidence do we have to demonstrate that?
We went from 2015 to 2023, spending the fund primarily on marketing and supporting local events. And there were certain capital purchases, like we purchased the new trolley, out of reserve funding that we saved up over time. In April of 2023, the ordinance that's in place right now was implemented and it opened the door on administrative costs. So we moved the operation of the Welcome Center, including salaries, electricity costs, copier costs, coffee and condiments, everything related to the Welcome Center from the general fund and into the Tourism Fund. We also supported the Office of Outdoor Rec from the Tourism Fund. There were times we were supporting the Tourism Manager partially from the Tourism Fund in the past, partially from the general fund, once we moved that person to space to create. So the administrative costs in the general fund, right now we've spent in excess of six hundred thousand this year, collected less than six hundred thousand this year. And we're spending a significant percentage of that on salary and operational costs, minus approximately two hundred thousand in marketing, a little bit more, actually. I apologize, I don't have the numbers. I can give you them.
Without having the information, that's very thorny, so thank you. So I guess potentially someone could make the argument, while those are well reasoned and definitely could lend themselves to arguing. and definitely could, could lend themselves to arguing the best reason hotel stays. I mean, it could also be anecdotal evidence in the sense of, do we know, do other cities of our same size, whatever, do they show decrease in hotel stays? Because it occurs to me anytime I stay in a hotel or Airbnb, I haven't stayed there because I've seen an advertisement to stay in that town. I stay in that town because I have a need to stay in that town. So, and I think what we're saying is we all, we all want the same thing. We want Trinidad to do well and that's, you know, I've said that a lot up here. That's, that's important. We're all here for the same reason and having that common goal is a good starting point. But, so it would be interesting to note, have other places seen hotel declines in that period? Because, you know, this post pandemic, a few other things. But I think to sort of summarize what has been said up here, at least in some different ways is, I think it's important that we're not reinventing the wheel. And anybody that's been in management at any point, I think we find it hard to argue with the fact that you can't manage what you can't measure. So my, and if you have specific tasks that are important and technical tasks, leave those tasks to the professionals. So I, I really share the same opinion with Councilman Ogletree in the sense of, I really think we should find a professional agency that would have access to information such as, hey, what are the trends in other cities? What, what is a viable, what does Trinidad have that's a viable program to build an advertising campaign around to draw people to town? And then rather than re-venting the wheel, we give those funds as a, as whole, complete stream as we can. That's how you maximize the use of it, I would think. And let a professional agency do it. That's, that's my input. To Councilman Shu's point, I think that the next council as well is going to have, you know, definitely have some opinions on that. And I think it would be good to include that. The last thing I want to say, absolutely transparency is important. And past that, I think this is maybe a distinction without too much of a difference, but I think it's important. The ease of appearance of transparency is also important. So it's just how many layers that people have to dig to get that information. So I know, I know that you need some information and if maybe we can specifically narrow that down, we can hopefully give you some feedback.
So in response to a couple of things, yes, travel's down nationwide. It is down in Colorado. One of the things we identified in July is that we have approximately ninety-something Airbnbs listed, seventy-something VRBOs, not looking at some of the smaller type of travel. You know, travel has changed. We're not capturing a lot of the lodging tax from those. So this will definitely be a policy issue for the new council. We've already got it scheduled in February. We need to talk short-term rentals. We can revisit this ordinance again, but we're definitely going to need to look at some broader travel statistics. What we really need now to get the budget adopted is a repeal and a replacement of the existing ordinance so that we can move forward with a budget that number one, moves to pay as you go. Number two, limits the amount of administrative expenses. And number three, removes those percentages that the current ordinance limits staff so strongly by.
You know, what's really important is not so much getting someone to tell us what's in Trinidad. The real important thing is here to get somebody and develop something here that's attractive to people instead of going out and doing stuff. We need to build something here that's going to draw people here. And I think that's where the money should go is to do some development, put some business or try to work on doing that. And that should be part of the tourism. Is, that's, I think that's the most important thing right at the moment, is to get people to come here, to have them here, something that we have for them that's special from other places.
And I think when we present the budget, we can show we're going to invest in some new events that may do that. So what I hear you saying is to put forth the ordinance that has some additional language for community enrichment, which we thought, that also goes ahead and talks about the things we've identified and that eliminates the lodging tax advisory board for the current timeframe to be tabled for a discussion with the new council.
Yeah, I think.
In the new year.
I think just that messaging there would be helpful that, that really there isn't going to be any major expenditures until, and I think that should, that should make people more comfortable with the transparency issues.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's good.
Yeah, because we're not even looking at a, turning an actual reserve until, what, twenty-seven?
Yeah, we're, we will have a definite transition year, the next two years. Mr. Downs, did you want to comment anything on this?
Just the paragraph number one, I think really helps to deal with the transparency concerns. Special fund, how that's set up, how that's done. I just think that really helps with transparency. That's all I have.
Well, and also too, I just want to, if I can add in there, we do have two places, you have put two people in positions for the transparency already. So I have completely create that we're, that's going to change. You know, we have a communications director, we have, and we have someone in the tourism office, actually. So I do believe that updating those websites, putting up reports as they come up, if there's new programs that we're utilizing, I think that shows pure transparency.
Okay, we will prepare this ordinance for first reading on the eighteenth. Final adoption on the sixteenth alongside the budget. And then we will schedule a work session in February with the new council on tourism items. Okay? All right.
Item, item six, review of twenty twenty-six capital improvement fund budget.
Actually, we're going to do the tourism fund first.
Well, then in that case, it'll be item five.
Okay. Okay, now we do the budget to the associated new ordinance we just passed. We're just. Revenues to the tourism fund come from the six percent lodging tax passed by voters in twenty twenty-four. In twenty twenty-six, the projected revenues from this tax are six hundred and ten thousand, which is a conservative estimate and on track with projected revenues. From twenty twenty-five, additional revenues are expected from Santa Fe Trail Festival and other newly developed events, as well as a small amount of interest income. Should lodging tax revenues perform better than expected, we can amend the budget mid-year and pass a supplemental appropriation for additional funding. So total tourism revenues of six hundred and eighty thousand. Expenditures with the twenty twenty-six budget, we're moving to a pass as you go model, which means we will only request an appropriation for approximately sixty percent of the revenue earned in twenty twenty-six. This will allow us to set aside two hundred thousand for future appropriations. The proposed budget includes five main components. One, one hundred thousand for marketing purposes. It includes one hundred thousand for grants to local events. It includes one hundred and forty thousand for several line items, including thirty thousand for Santa Fe Trail days, thirty-five thousand for fireworks and seventy-five thousand for new event development, which goes to what Councilman Shu was saying about developing the types of things that bring people here. It also includes thirty thousand seven hundred and fifty-three for trolley operations. And it finally includes a transfer to the general fund for tourism operations at the welcome center of one hundred thousand. That's about eighty percent of the welcome center budget. We'll dial that down year after year. So total tourism fund expenses of four seventy-seven fifty-three. So expenses of six hundred and eighty thou, I mean revenues of six hundred and eighty thousand. Expenses of four seventy-seven fifty-three. The difference is two hundred and nine thousand two hundred and forty-seven. That will go into the balance of the fund to start a pay as you go model. Any questions about this particular budget?
As far as just the grants for local events, I, I would suggest it'd be a good idea to make requirement that marketing for those events goes outside of the state lands.
And we're going to collect data from that investment as well.
Okay.
Tori?
On the revenues and everything, are those figures, because we were short, it was down. Are those the correct figures?
They are. We budgeted seven hundred and forty thousand for lodging tax in twenty twenty-five. We're going to hit about six fifteen, I think six twenty. So we're budgeting six ten.
Okay. Any question?
No.
No. I have no questions on this, we're just, yeah, thank you.
Okay, that's tourism.
All right. This, this time I'm fairly confident it's item six, review of twenty twenty-six capital improvement fund budget.
Okay, this is the last one for today. Revenues from this fund derived from the one percent sales tax just approved by the voters as a permanent tax. I definitely think we need a round of applause for that.
Bravo, bravo.
Thank you. I pulled the less down.
Yeah, you did. She did too.
This was first approved in nineteen eighty and has been in place for forty-five years. The recent passage will allow city council to begin long-term planning and investments in city infrastructure that goes beyond the short runway of one to five years. And that is a really big win for our long-term ability to plan. I don't think there's anything that will be as impactful as this in the coming year, this ability. So capital improvement fund review, budgeted revenues for CIP in twenty twenty-six will be two point five million from the one percent CIP sales tax, as well as grant revenues, transfers in from other funds and interest income. There are two transfers into the general fund. One is five hundred and sixty thousand from Kip Hamden, which is the matching funds for the Convent Church Holy Trinity Apartments project. That will come in next year. The other is ninety thousand from CDOT, okay? The one percent CIP sales tax is expected to bring in two million five hundred thousand. Federal grants in the amount of twenty million four hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-three include monies for the CDOT multi-use path, Holy Trinity Strong Communities and the Raze Grant. State grants in the amount of two million six hundred and sixty thousand include DOLAS EIAF for Convent and Church, DOLAS Fox West Theater Grant and the Community Relationalization Grant for Fox West Theater. And then transfers in of six hundred and fifty, which are the two I just mentioned from Kip Hamden and CDOT. There are also funds that are being transferred into CIP from the general fund and Economic Development Fund this year in twenty twenty-five in the amount of nine hundred and seventy thousand. That includes the River Visioning of seven hundred thousand and the Holy Trinity Apartment, now a ward, of two hundred and seventy thousand. We've taken those out of Economic Development Fund and out of the general fund and moved them to CIP this year. This amount exists in fund balance as of the end of twenty twenty-five. And of that, the unused funds in the amount of eight hundred and seventy thousand are budgeted in twenty twenty-six in the lines for Riverwalk improvements and Holy Trinity Apartments. Now it's fun, it's important that you realize that eight hundred and seventy thousand is revenue we're recognizing in twenty twenty-five, but expenses we're having in twenty twenty-six, okay? And we'll come back to that when we get to the bottom line. The proposed projects for twenty twenty-six are driven by several factors. Oh, let me go back up, I skipped. Total capital fund revenues of twenty-six million six hundred and fifty-four thousand ninety-three dollars. Aren't you lucky you're not listening to this on the video and you have to hear my voice scratch its way through this. There are expenditures in CIP funds that will draw down on existing grant funding, existing funding from transfers and the one percent CIP sales tax. Details are provided below for each proposed project. The proposed projects for twenty twenty-six are driven by several factors. One, we have grant funding on a timeline that requires the project in twenty twenty-six. Two, the project has been designed and is ready to go to bid in early twenty twenty-six. Three, the project represents an ongoing priority. Four, we have the capacity to do these projects in twenty twenty-six. So what we're really trying to do with this budget is put forward the projects we know we have the capacity to do. Okay, now you look at the project grid and I'm not going to be able to read this to you, but we'll instead take questions from you. Let me just explain the grid. First column is the one percent CIP funding. That's our dollars from CIP. Next is the grant funding. And third is the transfers in from other funds. Then the total is what you'll see represented on the budget line item. So for example, the Raze Grant, if you look down two-thirds of the way, we have zero dollars in that. It's one hundred percent grant funding. If you go up a little higher, DOLA Convent Church Street, we have zero projects in that, but we have both grant funding and transfers in. So what I wanted you to be able to do is see what our money from the taxpayers is being spent on versus grant funding. So if you look at grant funding at the bottom, you see the twenty-three million one hundred and forty-four thousand ninety-three in revenues, same amount in expenditures, right? On transfers, you see six hundred and fifty in twenty twenty-six. Total amount of expenditures and the difference is that eight hundred and seventy. I just pointed you to the eight seventy. Those are things transferred in this year that will be spent as expenditures next year. So where we are on CIP in the first column is, we presented a budget on October seventh that was four point four million in the whole, overall. We've now presented a budget that is eight hundred and fifty thousand in the hole, pulling from reserves, eight hundred and fifty thousand to do these projects. In twenty-six, the total, in the, the total pulling from reserves is one million seven hundred and twenty thousand. But just a reminder that eight hundred and seventy thousand of that is the money we've transferred in this year. And then eight hundred and fifty thousand of that comes out of the CIP reserve, which has just over six million in, in the bank right now. Do you understand the grid? That's the first question.
Yes.
Okay.
So are you saying that all of the projects that are listed, excuse me, are ones we expect to be able to do complete in twenty twenty-six?
Yes. That is what we're committed to.
What is the? I made just questions. What's a golf course improvement? What are you planning on there?
I have a long list of golf course improvements that add up to about a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Regular maintenance, basically?
No, improvements.
Just, oh, okay.
We've put quite a bit of money in the past couple of years into Monument Lake. You can see I lowered that to one fifty and raised the golf course up to one fifty to create some parity between those two investments.
I have another question. Riverwalk improvements, it's not listed, getting any CIP funding and then nothing's going into that for through twenty thirty. Is there a reason why that is?
The five hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars that you approved several weeks ago is for final design and engineering only. That was transferred in from the general fund to CIP. We cannot use CIP funds on that project because we're not creating an asset. So what I've done is left for, for this year, the plan is to complete final design. The new council will then decide where we're going with construction. I don't have any identified sources for that yet, other than when we have the final design, we'll have cost estimates. I can't present a proposed expenditure on construction until I know what it will cost.
Yes, of course.
Yeah. We, I should say, we can.
So the question, we have twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine and thirty. Is that the new, is that continuing, continuing allocations for that?
Sure, those are continuing allocations for those things.
So each year that that goes, that's where they'll, they change?
This is a proposed continuing allocation.
Okay, I get it.
You can see that totals, we've proposed some continuing allocations. We moved Garfield Street to twenty twenty-seven at nine hundred thousand there and had some proposed continuations, but we didn't build out twenty-eight, twenty-nine and thirty because the new council will need to start doing more like ten-year capital improvement plan.
Justin, come over here, I want to talk to you about that Garfield.
He is available to come up.
I want to figure out what the hell. This has been going on for eight years now.
Lucky came with a.
Yeah.
Oh, man, who got you? Who got you?
Do you need to get Chief Rolls to issue you a flat check? Do you need to get Chief Rolls to issue you a flat jacket for this conversation?
I'm good.
Okay.
What exactly, are we still planning on doing the gas line and all the other stuff up there? Or is, is that, that doesn't seem like it's going to be enough to cover any of that? But I mean, that's for '27 budget, I understand. But what's going on that we, how we haven't done that project? Or is there something that we can't get granny for for moving the gas line and stuff?
No, it, I'm going to be quite honest. Last year, a whole bunch of projects were at the very end, were dropped into our lap, and my staff was only able to get what we got out now. And I'm quite, actually, quite pleased. I mean, I could go down the list. Unfortunately, Garfield just, it didn't, it wasn't near the priority. We had a grant where we had to get Church and Convent out. I mean, we're on a very straight dialing, and we busted to get it done. Pickleball, we set up the design documents for pickleball courts. Skate park rehab, sidewalk revolving fence, takes a lot of time for people to come in. Saddle road, we finished it up. Drainage and septic, that's ready to go out at Fleet right now. We've got a crapping project out. We take nearly 15 blocks this year.
What are we doing with that $50,000? That doesn't seem like a lot of money to do paving. Which streets you have planned for paving?
For next year?
Yeah.
Right now, we're still, we're still hanging our hat on Linden Avenue. Gary Bazzoni said that he's got a project he's going to finish over in the valley, and he's coming back. If anything, we might get the roto mill done this year. And whether it continues to hold out, we might even get it paved.
What street did you say? I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
Linden.
Oh, Linden.
Linden.
Okay.
Yeah. What we would like to do, since we got the ADA completed on East Main Street from the mid-block, east block, east of Commercial, we'd like to roto mill and do Main Street because now we've got all the ADA. And there's a few miscellaneous ramps and sidewalks that need to be done, all the way out to the hospital. But that section of Main Street has gotten terrible.
This bridge needs to be done.
This bridge, this bridge needs to be done?
It's over, I mean, it's getting terrible.
Yeah, it is.
And that isn't, you don't need to roto mill that, do you?
You do when you're working on bridges. We're going to have to roto mill the Linden Bridge because you can't add any more dead load to the bridges. So, yeah, and, you know, Bazzoni's got, he's got a full-size mill now. So, and there's other people that bid projects as well, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Just?
Just curious, and it's just a curiosity, honestly. On the paving, we always say asphalt, asphalt. But a lot of the areas, does that also count, that cover the brick replacement? Because there's a lot of places where there's bricks missing, so I'm not clear on that.
It's both.
Okay.
Yeah, primarily, it's asphalt, but in areas that we do have brick, we try to go back in with the brick.
Okay.
One of the things you'll note is, one, and maybe you don't see it here. Last year, capital improvement got the gravel line item, it got the paint sign line item, and it got the
Sand and salt?
Sand and salt line item. Those have all been moved back to the General Fund. Those have all been moved back to the General Fund. We want to try and monetize these for the true construction improvement project. So we put the maintenance items back in General Fund for 2026 budget. We'll be noting that on November 2nd, 22nd, when we do the final review. Any other questions for Mr. Just?
This may be not specific, Mr. Just, just in general. Where, I should know this, but where are we on the East Main rework project? Where is that?
So you're talking about Santa Fe Trail pedestrian path?
No.
You say East Main.
East Main.
East Main. They were supposed to redo, I mean, West Main.
I am, on the west end.
The west end.
Oh, so we have designed, we have designed ready plans. We just need to find $12 million to rebuild it. We're searching for grants, so, but that's, that's estimated cost from the consultant. They had to consult repair plans. It's maybe about $12,000, plus or minus.
So that'll be for the new council to discuss. We have several really large projects.
Yeah, okay, I was, I was curious. So that, that in effect is complete, ready-to-go plans, then?
That's correct. We have what they call shovel-ready plans.
Sure, because that'd be, if we could get that off the ground, that'd be a huge improvement.
We just need to double our reserve.
Yeah. But I did have one other question. How, how, if you would, remind me how and who maybe thought of putting the capital improvement vote up to permanent ongoing replacement?
I don't know. In my first meeting with Ms. Garrett, we talked about it. She said, I think we ought to go permanent. I said, let's do it. That was it.
Yeah, that was, I mean,
Amazing suggestion.
What a smart thing to do for Trinidad, I mean.
I will credit Ms. Garrett with that suggestion, for sure.
Round of applause.
Yes, yeah. But anyway, and it's good to hear that Linden is on the radar. I think that'd be a huge improvement for the people in that neighborhood and people, the people that frequent through that neighborhood.
It's one where, mainly east-west, they're fair, so, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Just.
Thank you.
And I just want to reiterate something that Mr. Just just said, and that is that grant funding is good when you get it, but when you go for grant funding, you go for the available dollars and it changes your priorities, right? Because a project that might have been 15th on the list becomes first and second on the list. So just, I believe that's what happened with Garfield, is that we are able to do, I want to point out the Convent and Church project, with $150,000. That is a $5.5 million project. We're putting $150,000 of CIP in it. So I want to credit Mr. Mason and his team, who've done a lot of work getting the grant funding, working with DOLA and Mr. Just and the engineering team for doing that engineering. It's pretty amazing.
Amazing leverage of dollars right there.
Amazing leverage of dollars for both of those apartments, engineering and development services.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any changes on this? Are you comfortable me presenting the budget with $850,000 coming out of reserves?
It's way better than it was.
It's way better than it was.
Way much better.
Okay. Then, the last page of the memo is just covering the schedule. We've done three work sessions now. On November 18th, we'll do a first reading of the budget ordinances. That's next Tuesday. We'll do a final review on November 22nd of the proposed budget and adopt on December 16th. This schedule and the availability of the budget is in conformance with the City of Trinidad Home Rule Charter. Thank you. This has been a very interesting budget season for me. That is, I hope, my final memo.
Just wait till next year.
Thank you, thank you. Staff did a great job.
That will conclude this work session.